I would like to call to order this regular meeting of the Urbana City Council for Monday, April 22, 2024. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Ms. Hershey? Ms. Colletti?
Here.
Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Wilken?
Here.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here.
Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes from two meetings. The first is March 4, 2024 Committee of the Whole minutes. The second is March 18, 2024 Committee of the Whole minutes. Is there a motion?
So moved.
There's a second.
I'll second.
Discussion. Grace?
Can I just clarify that there was an updated set of minutes for the March 4 meeting and just which set we were considering here?
Yes, there was a email sent today with a revised portion of the minutes for Resolution Number 2024-03-013R.
Just wanted to clarify which version was moved?
At this point, it's the minutes originally submitted. If you want to amend that, you can do that.
Then I would move to amend the revised minutes for March 4, 2024.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Grace, seconded by Jayah. Discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Alright, so we are looking at the revised Committee of the Whole meeting minutes that were sent out today. Is any other substantial corrections? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Same sign? Alright, the minutes are approved as amended for March 4 and as originally presented for March 18. Any additions to the agenda? Presentations and public input? Seeing none. Council input and communications. I just want to let folks know that I will be traveling with Champaign County First next Monday, March 29 to Washington DC. This is the annual lobbying trip to Washington DC. I'll be going with a number of representatives from different local governments, the University of Illinois, and we will be focused on infrastructure projects that are important to, on a countywide basis. So these include things like mapping of the Mohammed Aquifer. We're still seeking funding, $10 million in funding for the reconstruction of Florida Avenue. We're advocating for passenger rail, high-speed rail. MTD will be looking at hydrogen fuel cell buses, and there may be, and then an additional project in Champaign for a grade crossing improvement on Bradley Avenue. So I'll be gone next week. James?
Yeah, I did want to mention, there is a open house tomorrow night, April 23, from 3:00 PM to 7:00 PM on the Lincoln Avenue corridor study. I think it's really important for people who are interested, concerned, have feelings about that project. The open house is at Illinois Street Residence Halls, which is on Illinois Street. That's the best place to get to it. It's at 3:00 PM, 7:00 PM. I hope anybody who has an interest or who has been watching this project move along, contributed to the map and suggestions and so forth, can come out and see what's going on and continue to provide input on this study.
Thank you. Any other announcements? Mary Alice?
I just wanted the public and the committee to know, sorry, council, that the legislative act that put a sunset clause on the liheep passed to remove that sunset clause, and that is going on now to the state senate. It has to pass both of them before January 1 in order for the liheep to continue.
Any other announcements? Okay, there is no unfinished business. We'll move on to, there's no reports of standing committees. We'll move on to the report from the Committee of the Whole. James?
Alright, the Committee of the Whole recommends for approval, items on the consent agenda, including Resolution Number 2024-04-018R, a resolution authorizing acceptance of the Illinois Law Enforcement Training Standards Board Fiscal Year 24 Office Recruitment and Retention Grant, Resolution Number 2024-04-19019R, a resolution approving the transfer of volume cap in connection with private activity bond issues, single-family mortgage revenue bonds and related matters, private bond cap allowance for EIEDA Series 2024, and finally Resolution Number 2024-04-20R, a resolution approving the transfer of volume cap in connection with private activity bond issues, single-family mortgage revenue bonds and related matters, private bond cap allowance for IHDA Series 2024.
Is there a second?
Second.
There are none? I'll give it to Shandra. Alright. Alright, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey? Ms. Colletti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes. There are no items on the regular agenda, no reports of special committees, reports of officers. We have a fire station update.
Good evening, council. As you know, we opened bids for the fire stations from our subcontractors last week, and I just wanted to provide you kind of an update on that. We're not quite to final award, but far enough along to give you some good insights and information. So the bid summary, we had 44 subcontractor bid submissions for the different areas of work for this project. As of right now, the estimated guaranteed maximum price that we expect to see from PJ Hair, along with all subs included, would be 13.7 million. The awards have not been finalized, but there should not be substantial changes to this GMP, this projected GMP. Proposals are under final scope review, just to make sure that the different subcontractors that we intend to award to have covered all areas of scope that they were supposed to, and that's taken into account PJ Hair as the prime construction manager has to make sure that's all accounted for before we finalize award. In addition to that, we've got about $400,000 that we estimate for furnishings, fixtures, and equipment. That was part of the original budget of the 14.4 that we were projecting, but that's stuff that we'll pay for just from staff procurement for things like appliances, office furniture, storage solutions, telecommunications equipment, fire station alerting systems, and other fire service equipment to outfit the station itself. All that said, is we're projected to be under our 14.4 million target. The intention would be the remainder between that 13.7 and $400,000 would just be reserved for any potential construction scope changes that fall outside of the guaranteed maximum price scope. We had 13 bid packages total. This is just kind of a summary of the different packages. We had general trades, building concrete, site work, masonry, structural steel, erection, hollow core, roofing, form metal, wall panels, glaze, glass and glazing, framing, drywall, insulation, ceiling, acoustic panels, flooring, painting, fire suppression, plumbing, HVAC, and electrical. These were strategically packaged together to kind of optimize getting subcontractor inclusion and trying to get areas of work together to facilitate higher participation rates. The numbers there to the side are the number of submissions we had in each of those different packages. And what we're projecting right now for participation in union utilization, some numbers, and again, this is not final, but we expect this to be pretty comparable, if not final, pending the final scope review, but the estimated BEP participation is 22.7%. 8.7% of that would be minority business enterprises. 14% would be women-owned business enterprises. Estimated local participation, actually, I'll just jump over to the right there first, just to talk about the BEP stuff through the Illinois Commission of Equity and Inclusion. These are the areas of designation on the right that ICE recognizes for inclusion of this, and that's, as you can see at the bottom, that's what our DECO project funds. They had different utilization rates there. The combined goal of 1% for minority women and persons with disabilities. And then the second grant was for the million dollars was, had a combined goal of 11% for minority women or a combination of minority and women. As you can see, we're projecting to be well above those, as well as the city council goal of 10% for the minority women and veteran businesses. Estimated local participation, just some other statistics here, 19.2% of the total project we expect to go to Urbana businesses at this point, and that's probably somewhat conservative because we haven't drilled down to like actual vendors of materials, and we have some probably pretty big material purchases that are going to come out of Urbana tied to this as well. So I would say that that number is conservative. And then 54.3% Champaign County businesses is kind of where we're expecting this award to go. Estimated union utilization is 100%. All of the subcontractors are full-union shops, and projected 0% non-union at this point. Just reviewing the next steps that we'd kind of discussed previously is where we've come. Are the bids at or below the budgeted authority? The answer is yes. And do the bids meet the 10% participation goal? The answer is yes, so we're not actually asking for any additional action to be taken at this time. I think we've got the budget amendment that's coming as part of the Committee of the Whole after this meeting, but we'll not, we're not making any recommendations for adjustments to the fire station project budgets based on the bids we've received. Tentative schedule, hope to get the final scope review completed here in the next week or so to finalize the contract with PJ Hair and all subs, and then begin construction in May, and complete construction on or before May of next year. And that concludes my update, so I'll take any questions.
Any questions? James?
If you could roll back to the percentages there, when I'm looking at the estimated local participation, do I, can I understand the 19.2%? Is that part of the 54% or is the 54% Champaign County businesses outside of Urbana?
It's part of it.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Grace?
Thanks for the update, and it sounds like quite a few pieces of pretty good news. Would there be, are there options to increase it? Have you already gone with the local women, minority businesses that were out there? I just, you know, asking, is there a reason to increase the budget? Did you get any more expensive bids that we didn't take?
So this is reflective of the lowest response of responsible bidders at this point, which is kind of a standard practice for public engagement. There are opportunities to increase that. There are some others that meet that criteria. Another alternate within the bid package was for, not all bid packages were going to meet the participation goals just because they were, they didn't really have subcontractor opportunity. They were doing everything in-house, and they just weren't a BEP-certified company. There was an alternate there where people could essentially pay up to subcontract portions of their workout to hit the 12%, which was kind of the estimated overinflation of the target of 1%, 11%, and the 10% for the city. But what we found is, it wasn't that fruitful to go to that. I think the maximum we would get to would be like 25 or 26%, and some of those alternates were substantial. I think one of them was taking one of the bid packages from, I think, like 500,000-ish to 750,000 because they were essentially going to sub the entirety of the workout and just become a pass-through at that point. But we tried to be considerate of that. I think the answer is, for the most part, we had very favorable low bids that, you know, meet our participation limit. So we haven't drilled down into that completely, but I think the answer would be, we'd be talking about substantial cost increase to gain marginal percentage participation at this point.
So maybe to clarify, it sounds like it's, would be a recommendation to kind of stay where we are at this point. Is that right?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mary Alice?
I just want to clarify, since we're doing two houses, is construction starting on both of them at the same time and is supposed to wrap up at the end, same time, approximately?
Kind of. Essentially, what happens is one, one, everything's going to stagger a month from one to the other. Typically, they'll start doing site work on one, get a month along there, and then they'll flip the site work crew over to the other site. So one will stagger about a month behind the other one, so that the crews will kind of work systematically where if it takes a month to do site work, they'll be at one place, and then month two, they'll jump to the other site and begin site work there. So I would expect there to be about a month stagger between the start and the finish of the two.
Alright, thank you.
Other questions? Thank you, Tim.
Alright, thank you.
This is great news. Okay, we'll move on to new business. There is none. Discussion item, ward maps. You have before you a couple of handouts. One is a copy of the email that was sent out last week. Just wanted to make sure you all, which we all should have, but I wanted to, it's got some good information in it, and then a couple of maps. So, just to get this kicked off, a reminder that two additional maps were submitted by council members Mary Alice Wu for map eight, Grace Wilken map nine, and you did receive additional materials, including those maps, this week. The maps eight and nine were incorporated into the PowerPoint that was made the first week that we discussed these maps, and you should now have all nine maps included in that PowerPoint. And you also have printed copies of map eight and nine tonight, plus the amended map nine. So amended map nine is, was done to address a small, non-contiguous area in Ward Two. That non-contiguous area made the scoring on that map fairly low for compact and contiguous, so, so we took the liberty of moving a small area from Ward Two to Ward Three. That impacts 19 people total in order to correct the non-contiguous program or problem, and then this increases the score in Dave's redistricting category. So those maps, both the original map, Ward Nine, and the amended map are included for your consideration. The, the other thing that was sent out this week was a tool that was developed that you can use to score the ward maps using the common data points. That was a request we heard from council, some sort of rubric to use to kind of get organized and have a common, a common basis for evaluating the maps. So the tool uses Dave's redistricting data points of population deviation, minority representation score, and compactness scores. Those are, those are objective scores. There's a numerical value attached to those. And then it also includes some more subjective criteria that were based on what we heard during council discussions. Student population density, accommodating potential population increases due to the special census, and recognizing traditional neighborhoods. The council members, you can use this tool to weight specific criteria according to what you believe is more important relative to others, and the numerical value of the weight assigned is up to you. If you've had a chance to use the tool, you'll see it's pretty easy and straightforward. What you'll be manipulating are how you weight the various criteria included on that rubric. The, the important thing to note is the end result, and that tool will then take what you put into it and rank the maps from number one, which would be your top choice, to number nine, your lowest choice. And that's based on how you weighted things and the score is that result. So these rankings then can be used to help us hone in on which maps or map or maps are most preferred, and eventually get us to the point where we can post one or more for public feedback. So the end result of this rubric is, is, it's a common, it's a common tool for everyone to use, but what'll get you are rankings one to nine. So I hope, hope that's useful. So, so tonight, I guess the question is, are there questions on use of this tool, if you've had a chance to, to try it out? Grace?
Thank you. I guess just a quick clarification on the tool, and so you said that suggested that we just changed the weight column because the maps are already scored?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the only thing you can change. The rest of it has, will stay the same so that you're all operating with the same set of data points. So what changes is how you value the various criteria, or the value you place on the various criteria. And it doesn't matter, you could put a weight of 100 on it, but what you'll get is, the, the output you'll get is a ranking of one to nine based on what you believe. That make sense? Thank you, Will. And then I, the question we also have is, is there consensus to use amended map nine? I would, I would defer to the creator of the map first. Is that change okay with you?
Thank you. Yes, I think it's reasonable. It does definitely change the score on paper, and I appreciate the question. I did kind of want to speak to the map if that's a okay time. And with my weight, I weighted minority representation and traditional neighborhood the highest, and map nine came up the highest for me. Probably not surprising because that's what I was looking at in creating it. I think that it is kind of maybe shocking at first. It's kind of the north-south lines and splitting up some areas. My thought process there is if we talk about historically, University Avenue being kind of a segregation line in the city, was just a thought of possibly changing that, so it's not such a hard line in our wards as well. Kind of get some more campus-y and have wards two and three encompass some campus areas and some areas north of university. But yes, I think the amendment makes sense and makes the values better. Thank you.
It really changed the contiguous score. Mary Alice, did you want to speak to map eight since you created that one?
Sure. So I, I did my best to make it not look funny. We'll just, we'll say that first, because, you know, it's very easy if you're playing around with blocks and so forth. So I had a couple of strategies. One was to kind of generally keep people in, in the same area, the traditional neighborhoods that have been represented by those wards. Two was to try and separate some of the dorms. To the best of my knowledge, there are, I think, seven dorms in Urbana, if I'm correct. PAR, FAR, LAR, BUCY, Armory, ISR, Daniels.
Allen.
Allen, yeah, Allen, yeah. Yeah. So I, I did try and disentangle some of those when I was looking at it, and really, those are my two big strategies, was trying to make them look like they actually went together, they stayed with the traditional neighborhoods, and that not all of the dorms were clustered in one.
Then the other, the third point I wanted to bring up is if you can fill out the matrix, add your weights to each attribute, send a copy to Will by next Monday. Does that seem reasonable? It actually makes it really straightforward to have this matrix. Okay, he'll compile the results, and, did I see a hand? Mary Alice?
Said compile the matrix. Do you want us to copy the spreadsheet and give you our ratings? Is that what that means?
Yeah, I'll let Will answer what, basically, we want the ranking, the end result, the ranking.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Is that the, is that enough information for all of you? Want to see? Okay. Yeah. Yeah. Email your rankings one through nine, and we'll take it from there. Hopefully, we can then move on to at least narrowing down the ones that you would like to have the, undergo some additional public review and discussion. Grace?
Sorry, I thought of another question. I was wondering how traditional neighborhood was assessed? Because that's not part of Dave's redistricting software, right? I guess was the question.
That's a very good question, and that's, that's the most subjective of all these. So it's, it's going to be less, there's no numerical value you can place on it, but, but you can look at, for example, Dr. Ellis neighborhood in Ward Three. That's a traditional neighborhood. You can look at some of the other neighborhoods as well. So that's a subjective, subjective measure. And that changes over time, too, so. So we're, we're, we've got some very objective measures, and then we've got some more subjective measures. But this rubric helps bring them all together and results in a ranking. Sound like a plan? Any other discussion? Nope. By next Monday, we'll have all the rankings. Great. And thank you very much for all the time and thought and effort that's been put into this. It's hard. This is really hard, and this is a very challenging, because of the, you know, there's a lot of things that makes this very challenging, so, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to, we have two appointments tonight. The first is an appointment to the Human Relations Commission. I would ask you to approve the appointment of Vahagan Shiflikan to the Human Relations Commission for a term ending June 30, 2027. Vahan's been a resident of Urbana for six years. He's getting, pursuing a sociology degree at Parkland College. He has served as a senator in Parkland Student Government Association. He's got a bachelor's and master's in political science from Yerevan State University in Armenia. He brings a diverse professional background from government institutions in both the United States and Armenia. He has hands-on experience in legislative support, policy analysis, and fostering transparent communication between political and community stakeholders. He's previously worked as an assistant to the vice president of the National Assembly in Armenia and with the, within the office of the prime minister of Armenia. He, in his application, he said, and I quote, "I'm keen to join the Human Relations Commission, leveraging my academic background and professional experience to support my application. With a master's degree in political science and ongoing studies in sociology, I possess a well-rounded academic foundation. This interdisciplinary background not only equips me to comprehend the significance of addressing discrimination, but also empowers me with the expertise to devise effective strategies to tackle any form of discrimination within our community. His active involvement in social initiative bolsters my candidacy. During my time at Parkland College, I served as a senator in the Student Government Association and held the position of vice president in the International Student Association. In these capacities, I effectively advocated for student interest and perspectives within the college's administrative framework. Furthermore, my solid professional background in government institutions in both the US and Armenia highlights my dedication to public service." So I would ask that he be appointed for a term ending June 30, 2027. Is there a motion?
I'm going to say so moved because I'm not entirely sure how to pronounce his name.
It is Vahagan Shiflikan.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Moved by Mary Alice and seconded by Shandra. Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey? Ms. Colletti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes. The second appointment tonight is for the interim deputy fire chief for a term ending no later than October 4, 2024, and this would be for Clinton R. Whiterd. In a memo and language provided by the Human Resources Department, the council is asked to approve the appointment of battalion chief, Clinton R. Whiterd, as interim deputy fire chief. It'd be effective April 23, 2024, for a term ending no later than October 4, 2024. Per the council policy, his resume was supplied to you two weeks ago for your consideration. The deputy fire chief is one of 14 staff positions appointed by the mayor with the approval of the city council. The duties of the deputy fire chief include, and under administrative direction, manages, supervises. The deputy fire chief coordinates the activities of the operations division within the fire department, including emergency operations, medical services, facility and equipment maintenance, disaster preparedness, public education. equipment maintenance, disaster preparedness, public education, training, and employee development, and related programs and services. The position responds to and assumes command of emergency incidents as needed. It plans, delegates, assigns, and evaluates the work of division chiefs, coordinates assigned activities with other divisions, departments, and outside agencies, and provides a highly responsible and complex administrative support to the fire chief. The deputy fire chief reports to the fire chief. In terms of additional background information, there's a great deal of it in the resume that you were provided, but for the record tonight, I will state the battalion chief Clinton Whiterd has served the city of Urbana for more than 32 years as a member of the Urbana Fire Department. He was promoted to the rank of battalion chief in 2020. Prior to that, he served as captain, lieutenant, and firefighter. After the retirement of deputy chief Kyle Hench in March of 2024, B.C. Whiterd, who's the most senior battalion chief in the department, agreed to serve in the capacity of interim deputy fire chief while the department finalizes changes to its administrative staffing structure and conducts an internal search to fill the deputy fire chief role in a new and expanded capacity. There's, because of statutory regulations pertaining to promotions in the fire department, B.C. Whiterd will serve in this interim capacity for a term ending no later than October 4th, 2024, or until the new regular appointments are brought to city council, whichever is sooner. So what I would ask for a motion to approve battalion chief Clinton Whiterd as interim deputy fire chief.
So moved.
Moved by Jaya?
Second.
Seconded by Grace. Grace?
I had to say thanks to both of our appointees for willingness to serve in even more expanded capacities for the city. Thank you.
All right. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey? Ms. Colletti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes. Next item on the agenda is a closed session for purposes of discussing collective bargaining negotiations pursuant to 5 ILCS 120/2-C2. So I'll need a motion to go into closed session.
Move that we go into closed session.
Second?
Second.
Jaya, seconded by Jaya. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Do we need a roll call? We need a roll call on this.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey? Ms. Colletti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes. For the public's information, we will go upstairs into closed session. When we come back, we will come out of closed session and adjourn the meeting, and then move on to the committee of the whole meeting. And I forgot to say, congratulations, interim deputy chief Clinton Whiterd. All right, we have a quorum. I entertain a motion to come out of closed session.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Chandra. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Colletti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken? Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes, and there's no further business before the council. This meeting is adjourned, and we'll move directly into the committee of the whole meeting chaired by Mary Alice Wu.